The City Council is now in session. Please rise to the point of religion.
I'm calling the 22th of the United States of America.
America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The O'Clare City Council has called a roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Burby.
Here.
Chris Dohertyson.
Here.
Emmanuel. Emmanuel. Gregor.
Here.
Clay Tanner.
Here.
Loar.
Here.
Wow.
Here.
Wordsman. John.
Here.
I think Andrew is there now.
Wordsman.
Present.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to Monday, October 26th, virtual meeting of the Old Clare City Council. I would like to say that we're welcome to all of you joining us remotely. Those that are watching us on Valley Media and then our fellow council members that are joining us remotely as well. Again, if you wish to address the city council, you'll need to join the meeting as an attendee on a computer, tablet, or smartphone using the link provided on the city website. The Old Clare City Council conducts public hearings, listening sessions, and public discussion where residents in our community are invited and encouraged to ask questions and weigh in on the important decisions we will be making tomorrow afternoon in our legislative discussion or the coming weeks and months ahead. We want to thank Valley Media Works for live streaming this evening. To watch, visit valleymediaworks.org or visit channel 994 on Spectrum Cable. It is also simulcast at 101.9 FM. And you can find, if you'd like to find past meetings on YouTube under the Triple Valley Media Works channel. If you plan to address the council this evening, I will briefly review the protocol. Once an agenda item is introduced, staff will present them that item and following that presentation, the council may have questions to clarify an issue. We will then open the item for public input. Once the item is open for comment, please raise your hand on the web X screen and we will call on you in the order which the requests to speak are received. When it is your turn to comment, I will unmute you and ask you to please state your name and your address and then begin sharing your comments. We welcome each of you to speak for up to five minutes and I will then ask you to bring your comments to a close. I will then ask you to lower your hand and you will then be muted but are welcome to stay in line to listen into the rest of the meeting or share a comment on any of the other agenda items or during a public commentary period. There are times when council members will ask you follow-up questions so please give us a moment before disconnecting. Again, if you wish to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. Lastly, if you're not comfortable speaking in public, you can fill out a comment form on the city website and those comments will be shared with city council members ahead of our legislative meeting tomorrow. As always, you can email or call us outside of this meeting and our contact information is also followed on the city website. With that introduction, we will get on to our first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. A public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property located at 3301 and 3155 Birch Street to amend the general development plan for a mixed-use development for a four-story apartment building and commercial building. Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, Council President Weld and members of the council. Apologies for having some technical delays at the moment. But we will even see if this can work. I'm smiling at this underneath my mask, so thank you for carrying with me while we fix the adjustments that I. Again, before you this evening is a request to amend a general development plan for the mixed-use development of a four-story apartment building and a two-story commercial building located at the northeast corner or area of Birch Street and River Prairie Drive along the O'Clare River. The property question is approximately 303 acres in size, you've seen the hatched area with the aerial photo there. The applicant is Gerard Development LLC in conjunction with Fox Brothers LLC and Cornerstone Architects LLC. Two of the property owners included the City of O'Clare, still currently in possession of these properties to the south there, the hatched trap of the way, and then O'Clare River Partners LLC, I believe I got that right, the triangle where Arrow is pointing to the north. And I'll show a little more specifically related to the property boundaries and the area of question as we go forward here. This is the same area that was before you a little over a year ago when this first came forward as the rezoning request for the C3MX zoning. And that is still retaining the C3MX zoning, so mixed-use residential and commercial or office space, but it's looking to modify the general development plan here this week. The project is referred to as Prairie Heights Residences and the proposed development will include 60 apartments, approximately 10,000 to 12,000 square feet of commercial space. There is, as we hear up here with the parking. Thank you. We are getting closer. Again, there are two parcels included in the proposal. The one to the south is noted again is owned by the City of O'Clare still and that would be sold to the applicant for the agreement filed through the council. Actually, last year was intended to be sold. But again, that development agreement is still pending, completion of, I guess, successful application for local housing tax credits, which the applicants did go forward with last year for this year's tax credit, but was unsuccessful and therefore is looking at modifying the plan here before you tonight. Thank you. We are back on track. That is, who's the mask back on slide? Thank you. So the, there's a wedge-shaped parcel about 1.8 acres in size right along the river, kind of the south and east. That is, we see it's drawn and shown as an outlaw that is still to be retained by the City of O'Clare for future trail development and other amenities. That would be our next slide. Thank you. Uh, did we go too far? There we go. Thank you. You can see here the hatched area to the bottom right is the outlet that would be retained by the City of O'Clare. The orange is the kind of semi-aggressive shaped building that would be the four-story residential building and then the triangular wedge-shaped portion to the west of that to the right there would be, the blue would be the commercial portion. Last month, the Waterways and Parks Commission did hear the same request, recommended approval to the Plan Commission. Plan Commission heard this last week, is requiring approval before you, your discussion hopeful votes tomorrow. With that, again, I can go through a little more detail. As you see here, access to the site would be off of Herb Street. You can see to the top. Majority of the parking has been modified to be primarily surface parking versus underground parking. The other changes include separating that commercial piece off of the main building so they were, again, a more traditional mixed-use building. So the applicant is proposing to separate the two uses into two buildings as well. The reduction in residential units went from 80 to 60 and increased commercial square footage from 9,000 square feet to 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. Parking is slightly reduced, but again, majority of it is now surface parking. Portions of Birch Street adjacent to the site did not have curb area currently. Sidels would be required along here and again, they're showing proposed trail. That would be, again, it's just a general designation and not the final alignment. And again, there's showing some other onsite amenities that were being from the original proposal. It is recommended that a traffic impact analysis be performed in this area. There are some grading situations to see the hatched area being sort of more steeped slums. So again, the regional planning commission would also review that along with DNR as even a quarter of their development. The site is located along some bus tracks and again, close in the land as related to the City of O'Clare portion is contingent upon other milestones moving forward here. And with that, I'll just close with kind of the mix of the residential. The applicant has provided some details on that in their application. They're looking at 26 one-bedroom units, 22 two-bedroom, and 12 three-bedroom units. And again, they can speak more specifically to the proposed kind of workforce housing or low-income housing approach that they are taking with this project. With this, again, Waterways and Parks Commission made a recommendation to Plan Commission. Plan Commission is providing a positive recommendation for the council as well. And with that, again, the applicant is, I believe, available hopefully. Mr. Paul Gerard was present at the Plan Commission, being last week he provided some additional comments. And I'll close with they are looking to, again, move forward with the same kind of application process for low-income housing tax credits as they did last year. And again, that dictates some of their proposed timeline for the development of the project with the expectation that they would begin construction in the spring of 2022. With that, I'll leave you for your questions.
Are there any questions from council for Mr. Allen? Councilman McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Allen. My question was about the, you're referencing the agreement that was made about a year ago regarding the piece of property that's still owned by the city. I think, I'm not sure if that's called a purchase agreement or some sort of development agreement, but um, do you think that document would be something that city council could review before our vote tomorrow just so we, you know, have more information about the background on this? Just at least as a reminder, because I don't remember every detail in that document.
Sure, absolutely. We could sort of provide it to the council. Again, what was in your packet was a bit of a truncated version of what the applicant did submit. So they did submit a number of attachments related to their formal application and they included some of those copies. But again, yeah, those are items that were before the council previously, so happy to forward those on again once more.
Thank you. And just to clarify the, so the document from, I think it's page 14 of our packet, is that, that's essentially, I mean, that's, that's like a new, I guess, what part, I guess, are you referring to that is, that is part of that old agreement? Not okay, good.
Sure. The, yeah, page 14 includes their responses, yes, their, thank you, their responses to the, the application itself. So there's some little requirements as part of the general development plan application. And as part of this amendment, staff requested they provide a little more detail for each of those items. So that's what they are providing here for you as well. So there's a little bit more detail practicing this, even with their initial proposal last year. But again, with the changes that were being proposed, staff had requested that they provide a little bit more detail of this time around. So you see a little bit more attachments perhaps than you may be used to normally with the general development plan. They also provided some proposed elevations of the residential structure. Again, that's something that would be coming forward primarily to the Plan Commission, through the site plan process. So even after this, again, this is primarily to secure the appropriate zoning, which is the same development zoning related to this C3MX. And as a result, then the applicant can move forward with their application as well to for low-income housing tax credit. So that's part of the rationale for the timing of what's required here again, and the fact that there'd be significant amendments to what's this previously approved. All I have to say, again, they did include attachments in their original application form that we did not include here. It was about 60 some pages, I believe, of material. So we trimmed that down to the items that were due to look at. And I apologize, that was one that was removed, was the actual development agreement. Again, simply four or five of these things, but we can certainly send that around again to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council for Mr. Allen? Councilman McGregor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Allen, for the presentation. I was just wondering, curious about the sidewalk or the trail. It says River Prairie Trail Extended. So does that mean off of River Prairie Drive, the trail that comes up there and it would just turn the corner and be wide like that? Or would, would it be a sidewalk in addition to it? And then how far, because there's no sidewalk on that road right now. Well, there's a little bit, but then in front of the nursing home next door, there is no sidewalk. So I was wondering how far it would go down? Or maybe it's the trail or if the trail would just stop abruptly.
Great question. If I may, Council President Weld, turn that over to the W City Engineer, Leah Knapp. She responded with some additional information at the Plan Commission.
Certainly. Good evening, Ms. Knapp.
Good evening. This is a great question. We had this question at Plan Commission as well. On your screen, you can see kind of a yellowish line that's running along the property line. And we are proposing to have trail or sidewalk along there. We would like to have the extension of the trail go along the lot line to the edge of their property. So it would go from the existing trail to the northeast there, similar to what that yellow orangish line is. And then in the future, we talk about the trail section along the river and that's just a proposed, it's in our Parks and Waterways and our Bike and Ped Plan as a potential trail in the future. That's not included as part of this project, but it's, we're keeping lands to address that in the future if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Knapp.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen or Ms. Knapp in council? And I do not see any. Mr. Gerard?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair.
Do you have anything else you wish to share in regards to the application or?
I think what I'd like to just say is good evening to the members of the city council of O'Clare. And I'm joined tonight by Jason Grifanthrog, who is a property owner and a developer in the O'Clare area and is part of our team, as well as Mark Erickson from Everyday Engineering. We selected local contractors to try and show our support on this project and also members of our team. So I'm here to answer any questions related to the project that you have for the developer.
Good. Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilman McGregor?
Thank you. I do have a question and I apologize if I missed it, but it sounds like the developer will apply for the Lytec grant again and hopefully they're successful. But if they are not successful, I'm wondering if the plan would change of the, of the development.
Well, our first choice is such a great question. Our first choice would be to try and obtain affordable housing tax credits through Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. That is choice number one. Our second choice would be this property is in something that is called a qualified census tract that was just designated by HUD back here and WEADA participated in that designation. But it's also in an opportunity zone. So we would move forward, perhaps, looking at an opportunity zone project.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gerard or Mr. Grifanthrog? Any other questions from council? I do not see any others. Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing and if there are any individuals that wish to speak to this agenda item, again, please raise your hand. Does anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Good evening, Ms. Wolfgram.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Weld and members of the city council. My name is Susan Wolfgram. I live at 550 Graham Avenue. I'm co-chair of the Jona Affordable Housing Task Force and I sit on the Plan Commission. I'm in strong support of Paul Gerard's development and this rezoning request. In supporting this development, it is difficult to separate out the gap financing challenges. We have long known and is included in our Chippewa Valley Housing Task Force recommendations that our greatest need for housing are for those community members whose incomes fall within 30 to 60% of our county median income, our housing insecure. I have had many conversations with developers the past few years who want to meet this need but are not able to do so without procuring WEADA tax credits. And even then, the gap financing can be too overwhelming to pursue. Paul Gerard is proposing 85% of his units to serve households between 25 and 60% of the CMI and also requesting $750,000 of the Capital Improvement Plan funds for gap funding, whose designated purpose is to provide multifamily affordable housing. This project will also serve a population that developers are not able to serve, including disabled veterans and a segment of community members who are experiencing homelessness. Mr. Gerard is partnering with West Cap and Western Dairyland to provide supportive services and yes, those will need to be unpacked at a future point. We know that we cannot rely on WEADA tax credits to build housing for almost 40% of our workforce who are making at or less than $30,000 a year. And now, given the impact of COVID-19, it is likely these numbers have increased. It was significant and a very proud moment for O'Clare that for the first time in our city's history, just over $1 million was designated for multifamily housing in the five-year CIP. However, it is a relatively small amount when we are talking gap financing to build affordable housing. It is my hope over time that in our next CIP, we will be able to allocate more funds in an affordable housing fund to assist and incentivize developers. But at this current time, this $750,000 can fill the gap between private funding and the low-income tax credits for Paul Gerard. WEADA requires that developers have commitments for funding 85% of the cost of the development prior to submitting an application for tax credits. Mr. Gerard's application is due on December 11th. If our Housing Opportunities Commission was further along, it would make sense that their recommendation would be sought. However, they have just had their first orientation meeting. Mr. Gerard's development illustrates the spirit of what these funds were intended and what was advocated for. I encourage you to discuss this gap financing item in a timely manner with Mr. Gerard in the best interest of the 40-plus percent of our neighbors that are experiencing housing insecurity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfgram. Good evening, Ms. Mosley. Ms. Mosley, are you there?
So I'm Judy Mosley. Yep, I am Judy. I'm at 2230 Trimble Street here in O'Clare. And as Susan Wolfgram just mentioned, I am her co-chair of the Jona Affordable Housing Task Force and I am a newly seated member of the Housing Opportunities Commission, which you just met for the first time a couple of weeks ago. So I'm always happy, able to come and talk to you as the city council and, and give you happy news and say that I'm really pleased with the development for affordable housing. And I am pleased with this development. I'm, I'm happy to be able to endorse the efforts of this developer. I think he's given a lot of really careful planning and, and he's made sure that there is no adverse site impacts on the river and that the, the river and that view of the river is protected and respected. I, I think that he's put a lot of work into making sure that these units are truly affordable for low-income families and for moderate income families. We've seen a lot of development proposals over the last two years for what's called workforce housing, but we have seen almost nothing for low-income housing. So I'm happy that this is addressing that segment of the population also. Employers in this area, you know, I'm thinking of large grocery stores, hair salons, restaurants, hotels, hospitality industry. And we all know that those jobs don't pay a great deal. So those are the families that are most likely to really need and be able to utilize this sort of housing. Gerard Development has made changes to this plan in order to make themselves more competitive for those WEADA tax credits. And, and I'm really glad to see that they did, that they've hung in there for an entire year and they've come back to other attempt. So to me, that shows some real dedication on Gerard Development's part. She appreciates the experience that this developer brings. I'm, I'm not sure if members of the council are aware of this, but Mr. Gerard has some very deep family roots and family history in O'Clare. So I'm very happy to see him come home as it were and, and really attempt to do a project here in O'Clare. I second Susan Wolfgram's urging that the city council are using a portion of that CIP funding that's been designated for multifamily housing development for this project. I know that it is important that we make an investment in this and it's important to recognize that $1 million does not go very far when it comes to building housing. to recognize that $1 million does not go very far when it comes to building housing. If you think about it in another way, with $1 million, you could build four relatively affordable single-family homes. Just with $750,000, which is what the development group is asking for, you could only build three single-family homes. But this development would provide a great deal more than that. So I'd really urge you to consider that and make a positive step forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Mr. Gerard, did you have?
Yes, I have just a point of order. I saw on the agenda that this is a public hearing, and then I saw on the agenda again, it comes up again. So is this voted on twice? Because some municipalities are different, and I've done a lot of business around the state, wondering if this is coming up again. And if not, I do have some comments that I would like to offer, and further, what Susan Wolfgram and what Judy Mosley have said already.
This is just the one public hearing.
Okay.
On this agenda item.
Okay.
If you have any additional comments, this would be the time.
Yes, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Scott Allen and his staff for allowing us to go through this process again. So you've got a great staff there, and we've worked in many municipalities across the state. So the City of Eau Claire and Planning Commission, back in July of 19, passed something called the CIP Multifamily Affordable Housing Fund. The fund is scheduled currently and has $700,000 available in it, and it will be funded additionally all the way up to $1,050,000 by the end of 2024. We urge you to provide $750,000 towards our development. As the two previous spokes individuals have said, we are serving individuals at 25% to 60% of your county median income, and that illustrates to $14,000 to about $50,000 a year to serve a household. We would agree to take the money in two different calendar years, if that would be more palatable. But unlike developers that have come before you prior, we're serving households 85% of this project at 60% and down. Most of the other developments have had 80% and even 150% of county median income that are considered market rate. Furthermore, as pointed out, we are serving disabled American veterans that fall within these categories, and we will connect supportive services through West Cap and Western Dairyland. This project will also have a community facilities service in it, which will provide those services for the building and including John Q. Public at large. So if individuals that are seeking supportive services can come to our facility and possibly get connected to supportive services. I urge you to vote in favor of this development tonight. Furthermore, and lastly, this is the part that I think characterizes this development and the need. We will be serving 10 apartments in this project for homeless individuals. And as previously mentioned, COVID-19 has played a significant part in people's employment and ability to make income. We are in dire straits right now in many of the markets that I'm currently in, and we are working with individuals that can't seem to find the necessary funds to pay rent. So as a developer and a property owner, we are trying to work with these individuals. I see this income target only going up in the future, especially based upon the current market conditions. I thank you for your time, and I urge you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. And just to clarify, too, we will be voting tomorrow. Tonight is a public hearing and public discussion, and on Tuesday is our legislative session, and at that time, we will be voting on the rezoning and the general development plan.
Okay.
And that's at 4:00, starting at 4:00 tomorrow.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Sure. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Can I ask, does anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Not seeing any, moving on to agenda item number two, which is a public hearing on an ordinary zoning property located at the southwest corner of the North Crossing and Mill Run Road from C2P to R3P, and to adopt the general development plan for a multifamily apartment up to 56 units. Mr. Allen?
Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. Next slide, please. This item on the overhead map here is item number six, which is in the far west side of the city, along 312 or North Crossing, at the intersection with Mill Run Road. In the next slide, please. This shows a little more specifically, again, this is the rezoning as well, public hearing, so there is a public hearing notification process involved, and it shows the properties that were directly notified. I will talk a little more about that here shortly, but did receive a few comments from those in the area related to this proposal. The next slide, please. This shows a little more specifically the property in question, which is about 3.64 acres in size, is pre-zoned C2P, and the proposed zoning is for an R3P designation. The next slide, please. This shows the aerial photo as it relates to the property. You can see to the west, some of the parking area related to QuickTrip in the area. To the north, the Menards facility, which is also typically outside of the area of Eau Claire, and then some of the multifamily residential that surrounds the overall property. The next slide, please. The applicant, who did provide initial proposal, which was subsequently modified just immediately before the time commission meeting, I think it's ahead, I think, two slides. One more, thank you. This shows a little more specifically what's proposed, again, just for your attention to the building. I'll talk a little more about some of the other items that came up as part of the discussion last week. The applicant began his proposal to rezonate property from a commercial destination to residential, which would also include, with a key designation of my development, adopt the general development plan for multifamily apartments, in this case, up to 56 units in total, against the southwest corner of North Crossing and Mill Run Road, along Stone Wood Drive. Property was remained from the development to the west, which is currently occupied by QuickTrip. The property is also part of the overall master plan, owns Western Village, and was initially identified and suited for neighborhood commercials. Over the years, first used on property within the neighborhood has been rezoned, as you saw in the aerial photo, and developed into multifamily living. This area has seen recent development activity with care partners, living, the homeless assisted living in phase two, condos, and again, QuickTrip to the west. They have been marketed for sale for over two years, and before the applicant is under contract, property is pre-zoned by QuickTrip, and the applicant is looking to rezonate this portion here to this R3 designation to tie in with the, again, the more newly developed residential immediately around it. In terms of capex plans, just for clarification, including your fact in the staff report as well, that, again, it is appropriate for resident, excuse me, it is shown as capex plan shows it as commercial, but again, there are some considerations that can be made for residential zoning based on a number of criteria, and those are laid out before your consideration as well. Again, there is commercial development to the west and to the north, but again, majority of the development in the area is turning into residential, as I already noted. The site plans you see here consist of some buildings that would be two stories with one bedroom, two bedrooms, again, up to a total of 56 going units. The applicant has explained the location, though it shows here is, again, an easy highway access, accessibility to larger employers, and therefore they noted it would make it more affordable apartment units. Again, I should note that staff did receive a few phone calls post-development regarding that initial concept we saw, and then also did receive at least one email and also a letter from Menards, Inc., across the road, simply acknowledging that as a larger business with their corporate campus there, there would be noise, traffic, and light that could impact this development. So the applicant can perhaps respond again to that. They did respond that they're aware of that as part of the time commission review, but it was something that was noted by, again, the neighbors to the north. Again, some of the concerns of the neighbors to the south, we can jump ahead, I think, to slide. One more, thank you. This shows to the top there, the north is that Stonewood Drive. You can see the proposed, kind of remaining development to the south of this proposed development, which would be at the top of the screen. Again, we did receive a number of comments from residents in that area. We can jump back to slide again, please. We just wanted to, for reference, so you know kind of what's the south of what's proposed here before you, again, a lot of concern had to do with traffic flow, and primarily, some of this stuff is known as well, in order to plan commissions, that they're showing three separate connections. We can go one more slide ahead. Thank you. A little bit hard to see here, but again, yellow outline, you can see some of the three connections with a very large one to the far west for the two larger buildings, thank you, and then two smaller ones to the east for the smaller cluster of buildings as well. So we can slide together, thank you. Yep, you can see two to the east there, to the right. Again, those three proposed driveways would all come out onto Stonewood Drive, and then presumably, again, all the traffic in that area would access out of Mill Run Road. So with that, staff had recommended, part of the conditions of approval, that the applicant come forward with their final site plan. Again, this, much like the last agenda item, is required to have a final site plan approved by a plant commission, that they would reduce the driveways from three to two on this Stonewood Drive. So again, I may have to adjust some of the kind of interior traffic flow, but again, minimize those connections along Stonewood Drive, especially when it starts staggering and not matching up with what goes immediately to the south. Depending on the final site layout and estimated trip generation and abbreviated traffic impact analysis may be requested. Again, large amount of the concerns that we did here, not that there were too many in terms of a large number of concerns, but majority of those that we did hear from seem to focus on the traffic impacts and concerns, not just traffic number, but again, those connections to Stonewood Drive. So with that, I know WCA engineer Lena is focused online, if she has anything else to add, certainly can, at least through the Q and A portion here, but that concludes my comments. I would just like to say, the time commission has recommended approval and moved it forward here for your hearing here tonight, consideration tomorrow. And finally, I should note that the applicant has noted they would, they look to commence construction in next summer, so summer of 2021, and propose then go forward in two or three phases, completing it no later than 2024. So with that, I'll stand for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Are there any questions from council for Mr. Allen or Ms. Ness, also on the call? Councilor Gregory?
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Allen, and I think this question would be for Ms. Ness. Just wanted to confirm that there'll be, with this development, obviously, there's this site plan approval ahead, but does it appear that there's room for sidewalks along Stonewood Drive as well as along Mill Run Road up to the North Crossing? So that you'd have pedestrian connectivity and be able to kind of plan for the future pedestrian crossing of Highway 312, the North Crossing?
You're correct with the requirement sidewalk adjacent to the property and the roadway. It is not shown on this site plan that we're looking at tonight, but it is a requirement of the ordinance that sidewalk is included. And then additionally, you mentioned the connectivity to Mill Run Road and Mill Run Road to State Turn Highway 312, and that connection, there is a crossing that is located to the west at Town Hall, North Town Hall Road, and that has a signalized intersection with pedestrian push button for crossing. But at this location, without having sidewalk on the south or the north side for connectivity, at this point, there is not any pedestrian crossing or signalization for pedestrian crossing.
So I have a follow-up to that.
Sure.
So if we were to build the sidewalk on Mill Run Road up to the south end of the intersection with the North Crossing, is the other side of the road like the town of Union, or is that kind of what would hold up any sort of addition of a signal for pedestrian crossing?
Correct. We'd have to work with the town to make that sidewalk connection to the industrial area north of this residential area, and that would stem the Wisconsin Department of Transportation to entertain adding that crossing at the intersection. There are criteria that need to be met as well, but one of the baseline criteria that they look at is that the pedestrian and bicycle facility is there and they have connectivity.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. Any other questions from council from Mr. Allen or from Ms. Ness? I do not see any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ness. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this, I'm sorry, is Jason? Gripenthrog, is that you?
Yes, it is.
Did you have anything else that you wish to share?
I do not. I do not, Mr. Weld.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak to this agenda item, please, while raise your hands. Ms. Wolfgram?
Good evening again, Council President Weld and members of the City Council. My name is Susan Wolfgram. I live at 550 Graham Avenue. I strongly support this rezoning. This housing serves a moderate-income segment of employees in this area, for instance, warehouse workers at Menards who are making approximately $20 an hour, and others in the area making up to $24 an hour. Without asking for any financial support from the city, we we could not ask more from a developer than to provide 100% of their workforce attainable housing units at 60% to 80% of the county median income. The traditional income ranges of workforce housing are 60% to 120% of the CMI. However, GRIP is committed to providing for those with the greatest need on the lower end of that continuum. I urge you to support this development, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfgram. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item? And I'll ask if there's anyone else that wishes to speak to this agenda item. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to our public comments period. Those of you who are supposed to speak this evening during the public comment period, please click on the icon to raise your hand. I'll call you in the order which they appear on my screen. Please state your name and city of Eau Claire address. All the comment period is for those living or working in the city of Eau Claire. Please note that your comments should be regarding issues or concerns of citywide application, and please do not comment on issues that were on tonight's agenda. The council wants and needs to hear those comments during the notice public hearing or discussion. Also, please be aware that during this public comment period, council members are not allowed to ask questions or comment on your remarks, so please do not misinterpret our silence. We are listening. And again, I will move forward to anyone that wishes to speak during the public comment period. Please, again, please raise your hand. And I'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak during the public comment period. Not seeing any. At this time, it is the intention. Well, let me just let everyone know that listening in on the meeting, we will be closing out the public hearing and ending this, this meeting to the public, and we will be going into closed session. Again, I appreciate all of those that joined us this evening remotely and here in chambers, and those that have offered their comments during the public hearings and public discussion. Have a great night to those that are, that are signing off. And again, thank you. At this time, it is the intention of council to go into closed session. We will be closing public, we will be closing the public meeting link, and council will rejoin in the closed session. Upon completion of our closed session work, we will vote to come on closed session, and the public meeting will be adjourned from there. Final motion by council member Anderson and seconded by council member Clint Hammer, the city council may go into closed session to discuss public employee collective bargaining matters,
Following the declaration of expiration. We are trying to remain flexible as an organization to different changing conditions and orders and having contingencies for cross-training and election contingencies and trying to remain as functional and as efficient as we possibly can, given the ever-changing space of the COVID pandemic that we're encountering. We have had operational adjustments. We're continuing with the economic recovery efforts and participating in the Chippewa Valley Economic Recovery Task Force and also working with the Health Department on assisting our local businesses and our economic aspects that have been impacted by the pandemic, as we are also supporting the Respond Together Plan. With that, I would be happy to entertain any questions and if Lisa is on the line, I'm sure she would be happy to answer questions as well.
Are there any questions from council? Are there any questions from council? Council Vice President Emanuel.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President Weld, and good afternoon to colleagues, to our interim city manager, and to our public health director. Today's news of really the continued trajectory of where COVID is heading is absolutely it's it makes one be at a loss for words is what I could say about it. And I know as policymakers, I think this question would be for our health director. You know, we I feel that our council is very supportive of public health and the leadership there, and I think it's a normal, natural feeling for policymakers in a dire situation to say, what can I do to help? And so I know that you're working around the clock. I know that you are absolutely committed to coming back to council if there were any legislative action to take, and just wondering if our public health director would have a word for council of, you know, what can we do to be supportive in this really rough patch that probably will be rough for some time?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Ms. Keezie.
Thank you to council and to council member Emanuel. I, first of all, yes, we are in a really challenging position in Eau Claire, one that I was hoping we wouldn't get to, but we do still have opportunity, and I think as policymakers, my ask of you at this point is to really consider ways that you can lean in with the partnerships and the leadership voice you have to work with the community on why we all have shared interests in slowing these numbers down. In the last, since last week, Thursday, when I updated during the media event, we've had close to 600 cases since then. That obviously is overwhelming our public health system, as you heard Mr. Solberg describe. But it also is overwhelming our community. These are people that are home now. Their family members are close contacts. Our businesses are getting disrupted, our schools are, and we are having people increasingly in the hospital and having some significant impact. The voice all of you have, I would ask you to use to talk to the community about those common sense practices that haven't changed. So six feet distance, staying home when you're sick, getting tested if you have any symptoms, so we cannot have the next wave of disease happen. And really keeping the circle of people that you spend time with very, very small. The spread we're seeing, for the most part across Wisconsin, not just in Eau Claire, is often happening in close contact situations, whether they are work or social, where people are not either thinking it's important to keep distance or wear a cloth-based covering, or are they're momentarily not doing it for whatever reason. So the more that you can support a clear message about that, the better. And often, it's very much all of us realizing that it's serious and it will make a difference. We will have some tough decisions to make about how we continue to try and work to slow disease spread down. We are not keeping up with cases, so we are asking community partners to do more, to schools, for example, to contact all the close contacts and taking that off our list to do. So we are, just so you all know, we're asking others to take on the work of communicating with close contacts and keeping those people home for 14 days, and we need help with that. And and we know that all of this takes resources, so we will be, we are bringing on more staff members to work on contact tracing, that disease investigation work and the work, and we will need to do that for the next several weeks. But at this point, our tools are primarily digging in and realizing that this is serious, and we each play a role in slowing the next wave of disease spread. So that continues to be my ask of council.
Thank you, Ms. Keezie. Are there any other questions from council members? I do not see any. Thank you both very much. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Do council members have questions regarding the consent agenda or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, on a motion then by council member Anderson and seconded by council member Beaton, the consent agenda is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council member Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Clay Cammer?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes unanimously. There are no pro confirmations today, but which will lead us to our business agenda. And before I do so, council vice president Emanuel.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I will be recusing myself from this item. Thank you.
Council member John.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I would like to recuse myself from item numbers 15 and 16 and so on.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will begin with the agenda item number eight, which is a resolution authorizing extension of a lease for the use of land at Jeffers Road for community gardens. Mr. Plaza, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Before you see an extension of an agreement we currently have with the county and the University of UW extension runs a community garden, we entered this agreement in 2000 and
Mr. Plaza?
Yes.
Could you speak a little closer to the microphone? Is that okay?
Sure. How's this?
A little better. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll speak up. Before you is an agreement extension we entered with the county regarding our Jeffers Gardens on Jeffers Road. Before you, there's a map. It's to the east of the brush site along Jeffers Road and south of Jeffers Baseball Fields. We entered into this initial agreement in 2006, and we've been continuing this guarding ever since. They would like to extend this agreement for five years and then a five-year extension upon both parties agreeing. There is a clause, if any one party wants to back out, they can. And just as a note of interest, this year's garden, the gardeners produced over 200 pounds of vegetables or produce that they donated to feed my people. So if there's any questions, I can take those now.
Are there any questions from council? For Mr. Plaza? I do not see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a motion then by council member Burby and seconded by council member Christopherson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council member Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Clay Cammer?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye. Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
The matter of passage unanimously. Agenda item number nine is a resolution accepting and appropriating a Center for Tech and Civic Life grant for safe and secure election administration in the city of Eau Claire in 2020. Because this item amends the budget, a two-thirds vote or eight to five vote is needed for adoption. And Ms. Repel?
The Center for Tech and Civic Life has awarded the Elections Division a grant in the amount of $71,000 to be used for administering safe and secure elections in the city. There is no match required of this grant. The funds will cover unbundled expenses for election administration related to COVID-19, such as decreased number of absentee ballots, the inverse of absentee drive-through, overtime, safety supplies, absentee ballot drop box, expenses, and the funds will fill a projected unless, unless of the budget deficit this year. Without taking any questions.
Are there any questions from council in regards to agenda item number nine? I am not seeing any. On a motion then by council vice president Emanuel and seconded, the council member Gregor, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Council member Worthington?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Ms. Repel and our former city manager Dale Peters and the incredible staff for our city in proactively thinking about how we're going to safely make sure that everyone in our community has that opportunity and right to vote. And, you know, I think we're already seeing that that is going really well. And I'm just, I just want to give my thanks to our city clerk and all the folks that support this.
Thank you, council member Worthington. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council member Burby?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Clay Cammer?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
The matter of passage unanimously. The agenda item number 10 is a resolution authorizing city staff to apply for the Economic Development Administration and the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program grant jointly with Gateway Industrial Park Corporation and Chippewa Valley Innovation Center to assist with the construction of infrastructure and new CBIC facility in lot one of the Gateway Northwest Industrial Park. Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon, council members. The grant authorization before you is related to building new infrastructure and a new facility within Gateway Northwest Industrial Park. As you're aware, this is the, this location is the primary space that we are directing light industrial and distribution type of facilities coming into this, coming in the gateway, looking to come into the community. And we are running out of space within the Gateway Park. There are three pending projects on lots that are south of the county line road, and the remaining ground and parcels we are finding are difficult to develop due to soil conditions and/or excessive contours. So the parcel that we're looking at, which is identified as lot one, is 157 acres north of county line road. It's a great location for development, but it is, has no infrastructure, has no utilities, and is a long ways away from what we would deem market-ready, which is, or shovel-ready, which is able to get a client into space relatively quickly. The proposal that we're looking to do would help do that and move that forward. The first slide we are looking at here is proposed infrastructure that would go into lot one. The yellow bar represents the street work that would be completed. It would not be a full build-out within that site, but it would allow access deeper into the lot. The infrastructure would also include water and sewer and stormwater access, and the blue areas are identified for stormwater detention and stormwater diversion. This would allow a number of developable spaces, as you can see by the overhead, would provide a number of developable spaces with access to that new infrastructure and could be moved to shovel-ready very quickly. We are currently in a unique situation due to COVID. With the National Economic Disaster Declaration, it has made all communities eligible for an 80/20 match from the Economic Development Administration for public infrastructure improvement loans, the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. Part of that requirement is there has to be a project tied to the infrastructure, the infrastructure that's being drawn in. The EDA does not grant funding to do speculative development projects. In this case, we were able to connect with the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center, who was also at the time looking to do a new facility to replace their aging structure that is in the Chippewa County, the Chippewa Industrial Park near the airport. And talking with the two groups and talking with the leadership here in Eau Claire, we felt it was beneficial for the two of us to potentially combine on a project and put that in front of the EDA as opposed to try and compete against each other for what would likely be a single allocation. So the proposal before you includes costs for both the city infrastructure that would go in and the CBICs, the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center's new facility. And if you could advance to the next slide, the proposed facility is about 15,500 square feet. Again, these are very preliminary drawings and estimates. It's about 15,500 square feet, would provide space for additional clients. They have two primary clients that are in the process of transitioning out their existing facility, so they'll be coming into this new space with room for efficiency, room for growth, and a much better facility than what they currently have. The next slide, if you would please. This would be our surrendering what the exterior of the facility could look like within the space. So this has been a really big collaborative effort amongst what would be three applicants for this EDA grant. The city for putting in the infrastructure, Gateway Industrial Park Board, because they own the surrounding land, and the CBIC who would be purchasing one of the lots and would be building their new facility. The CBIC is an important part of our component in the project, because as we said, there has to be some sort of end user within an industrial park for the infrastructure to go in. So the CBIC's role would fill that nicely. We originally, when we first started talking about this project last fall, we were looking at a private development who was eyeing a portion of a lot within lot one, but they have put their project on hold until they have a better feel for what COVID is going to do moving forward. We expect them to come back to the table in perhaps first quarter of next year. So in order to meet the application deadlines for this project, CBIC fills the role with this facility to move the project forward. If you can move to the last slide, please. So this represents the combined budget of the two projects. The city's infrastructure, as a very conservative estimate and preliminary estimate, is about $1.741 million in total cost, and that includes engineering and design. The CBIC's project would be estimated at roughly let me grab that number back out. Apologize, I'm switching to new slide real quick. Their portion would be approximately $2.727 million, not counting design costs. The total grant application would be $4,827,000 total, of which the local match, the 20% match, would be $965,479.62, based on this estimate. We are in a kind of a unique position. We were also approached by Chippewa County, who had an interest in participating in this project. And so working with them, they have, they are in the process of getting approval to provide some funding to match on this project as well. So there will be three applicants applying for the grant, but there'll be three different applicant, or three different entities that would be providing the match. What we are proposing initially is that the city and Chippewa County would split the match evenly, and then after CBIC moves in their new facility and sells their old facility, they would repay their share of that back to both the city and Chippewa County. With that split in mind, we would be looking at a maximum share from the city of Eau Claire, $482,740. And again, this is just the 20% match against the overall project. This is a competitive, and it's one-time, first-come, first-served from the EDA. So timing for this is important to move forward. It's also a great opportunity for multiple entities to come together and provide some contribution to put a great facility in Gateway Northwest and also provide in some infrastructure and do a lot split that will provide some very marketable lots moving forward. At this point, I'd answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Council member Gregor?
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. White. I think this is a great proposal. I wanted to clarify, I understand this is the parcel of land that we recently purchased, and is that road that's proposed essentially the extension of Venture Drive to the north across the county line road? And then also, I know we've talked about when we were, when we were discussing purchasing this property in relation to some of the other development in the area, we were talking about interest in, you know, connectivity for recreational trails as being an opportunity in this area. And, you know, I'm kind of thinking of, you know, when people are working out in these areas, you know, having a place to to go for a walk or a lunch and things like that, so. But also potentially for, for safety, for transportation, commuting, and taking advantage of the natural areas out there. So I guess my second question would be, is there a, is there a plan to include anything like that with this? Or was that considered like a planning element with this project?
No, absolutely. I'd have to answer both those questions. The first question is, yes, this would essentially be an extension of Venture Drive moving into that lot. We have, we have laid the lot out to where, or the road out to where it would just extend forward. And this parcel actually has been owned by Gateway Industrial Park for about, I think, going on about 15 years. The 80-acre parcel, the city's in the process of purchasing, is actually to the west of this site, directly to the west, across County T Road. And there won't be any infrastructure going into that piece at this stage, but it will provide some larger lots for interested development. As to your question about amenities, we are looking into what we can do with one of the lots. If you look into that, into that map, there are two roughly equal 10-acre segments that are kind of identified in the middle and towards the west, to the left of that yellow line. That left-hand 10-acre piece is designated as a wetland space, and so is some of the space up above it. So we know we can't build into that area. So we are looking to see what would be allowable to do within a designated wetland space, potential for hiking trails or some sort of means to access that space and provide some sort of amenity to folks who might be interested in walking through the nature. We're, we're not sure what's allowable under the NRS regulations pertaining to wetlands, but it's something we have an interest in looking into to see if that might be an amenity we can provide into this new space.
All right, thanks for clarifying that for me.
Any other questions from council? Mr. White, I do not see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On a motion then by council member Moore and seconded by council member Clay Cammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Council member Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just want to voice my support for this project. I sit as the council representative on the Chippewa Valley Innovation Center board, and there's been a lot of excitement even prior to this project presenting itself and bringing the CBIC into its next generation and expanding its influence in this region for industry and business. The board chair, Ray Franch, she was formerly an employee of the city, really spotted this opportunity and presented our needs as partners to the city's application, and it's such a win-win-win. It makes this a much better application. But I simply want to say that from our perspective as a council, this project really does begin to put into practice what the Chippewa Valley is as an interest, because Chippewa County is very actively supportive of this. They're very actively supportive of the CBIC in recruiting and retaining industry and businesses. So I'm happy to be able to support this, and I want to emphasize to the public what a good collaborative project this is for our area. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Christopherson. Any other discussion in council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Council member Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Clay Cammer?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
The matter of passage unanimously. Agenda item number 11 is a resolution approving the certified survey map of the right-of-way dedication for the Eau Claire Public Library at 400 Eau Claire Street. Good afternoon, Mr. Allen.
Good afternoon, Council President Weld and members of the council. Before you this afternoon is a request to approve the two-lot CSM, which does include right-of-way dedication for the Eli Phillips Memorial Library. The item was before the Plan Commission at their meeting last week, and is recommended for approval before you this afternoon. The total area, as you see here, sorry, on the map, item number seven, as you know, right in the middle of the city in downtown. Go to the next slide, please. Here, this shows the final CSM as proposed. Lot One is essentially the bulk of the library building proper, and then the remainder includes the easement along the Eau Claire River, or potential future trail. And again, cleans up essentially some of the right-of-way situation along South Farwell Street. So this was discovered while doing a lot of preliminary work for the library project. And again, because of the right-of-way dedication, does need to go through the process of going to the Plan Commission, and now before the City Council here today for approval. And I will see if there are any questions.
Any questions from council, Mr. Allen? Councilmember Brager.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Allen. Not sure if we were able to find out anything more about how this happened in the first place, but from what I am interpreting this as, is when Farwell was widened or something like that, they just like steamrolled over the library's property or something. I can't really tell what else other than that. So I guess like one of my questions would be, like what if the library was like, hey, what if we want more land? Like, does Farwell just, I guess what happens if it's something like this? Because it just seems a little strange that that the library essentially is losing some property because at some point in the past, Farwell just added an extra couple lanes or something?
No, very good question. I did touch base with Deputy City Engineer Leoness, and it was, it was, you're right, it was a kind of a recording error that was a part of the deeding over of, back then, US Highway 12, that actually went through here, designated with this area. And again, there was some deeding error that had occurred at that point with that project a number of years ago. And so this is, some items were not recorded, and so just working to clean up the property records with the library project. So, I guess in a more pragmatic fashion, the library is not really losing property, simply cleaning up some of the property boundaries that should have been more accurately depicted back, again, many years ago.
Okay, because maybe, yeah, sorry, I guess a follow-up question, if that's all right?
Sure.
Because maybe the, I mean, the library I know was built in 1976, so it seems like Farwell might have been widened before that, but I guess we weren't able to figure that out necessarily.
No, not that specifically. Again, the property is supposed to have been deeded over when the original project occurred, so that would didn't, in terms of the US Highway 12, kind of, I would say, reclassification or relocation, more or less. But again, it wasn't recorded, or surveyed, or what have you correctly at that time. So, simply cleaned up property records, and this is how this was discovered. So, not sure if our city engineer, if our interim city manager is able to put on a city engineer hat and has any additional items to share, but that was the information that was provided to me by Deputy City Engineer Leoness, so. And again, apparently, there are some of these locations as well, just for comparison, along Hastings Way. So there's some cleanup that was going along there as well. So, exactly, these are, some of these are kind of decades-old errors that are being corrected here. So, again, I hate to say this, the library will be, or won't be losing property, but again, functionally, they will not be losing property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? I'm not seeing any, Mr. Allen, thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion that my councilmember Rippon, and seconded by councilmember John, the decision is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this call is over.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Aye.
Brager.
Aye.
Clint Hammer.
Aye.
Lorren.
Aye.
Wow.
Aye.
Worrisman.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Burdy.
Aye.
Burdy.
Aye.
Chris Aderson.
Aye.
Now I am passing unanimously. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution adopting the City of Eau Claire Landlord Support Program. Again, Mr. Allen.
Thank you again, Council President Weld and members of the council. I'm excited to present this to you this afternoon. This has been a long time coming. A lot of background we can share with you, but hopefully you're able to read through that with the resolution itself that's before you here this afternoon, as well as the background materials that were attached with that. You've seen some recent press on the matter, and being excited to present this to you on behalf of a large number of individuals, community partners, working together to put this before you this afternoon. Does go back to Councilmember Worthing and his recommendation to place $25,000 in the 2019 operational budget, essentially this time two years ago. And so, here we are, two years later, finally with the proposal of a landlord support program, which will essentially take that concept of a smart housing program from back this time two years ago, and hopefully put this into action. So at that time, it was something that was modeled after the UW Extension Services Rent Smart program. And from there, it was that concept, once the budget was adopted, and we moved into early 2019, was brought forward on the 100-day sprint, as part of that sprint cycle of the Action Lab for ending homelessness for those who are most vulnerable. And so there are a number of different groups and committees and task forces that were put together beginning early, early to mid 2019. And they came up with some draft concepts for what we're calling this Landlord Support Program. It was then packaged together in a draft format, brought forward to city staff in late 2019. And was working with Health Director Elise Kudizi, and it's awkward to say, our former city manager, Thiel Peters, and working with City Attorney's Office with W City Attorney Doug Hofer, and putting together some of the pieces to help essentially kind of enabling legislation, as it were, to make this happen. And we were putting that together as we carried over into the 2020 calendar year. And then, as you know, we've been facing a pandemic and all the related situations with that ever since. So in summer, just needed to really pick up the ball again and keep running. And so we gathered together a number of the original individuals who were participating with that, and just decided, let's meet every week for a couple months, and just let's really get this hammered out and finished up. Because, as you know, even in some of the media coverage today, the Maples neighborhood is faced with some new challenges, but making some progress with improving housing situations for a number of those residents there with a recent sale. So, a convergence of a number of issues occurred over the summer, and allowed a number of community partners to get together. And I was just honored to host a lot of that discussion. And those, I do want to acknowledge them, if I may. Their different organizations are referenced in the materials, but more specifically, from city and county staff, again, Doug Hofer, Keith Jonathan with Housing Authority, and Nancy Huberty with VHS, as well as others who were able to join off and on throughout that. And again, a number of community partners, Jenny Chapit with UCP, TJ Atkins, Executive Director of the Community Table, and then a number of individuals with the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force, Susan Wolfram, Judy Mosley, Paul Savetes. And again, as I mentioned, Maples neighborhood, one of their advocates and former managers up there, Emily Shields. And then as well as, again, a interested and engaged landlord through Riverbend Rentals, property manager, Mary Proznick. And with that, again, we had all those individuals put together and created a, have a super team to get this information together to you today. I don't want to oversell it, but again, a lot of different pieces that came together. You'd think just $25,000 wouldn't put together such a pretty robust and comprehensive program, but here it is. So, we have a landlord support program. There's anticipated budget provided in that, too. That talks about a two-pronged approach with this. The ready-to-rent program, certification program, and then the risk mitigation funds. And just real briefly with that, the first, the risk mitigation fund, we'll start with that, is an opportunity to, again, try to overall increase the number of rental opportunities for households working with a service provider or case managers, so we see that terminology through this. That's what that's referring to, to secure stable housing, or some call it supportive housing. Again, the program is designed to reduce perceived or actual risk posed to a landlord by virtue of the landlord agreeing to rent to an enrolled client with this landlord support program. So, there would be some funds that would be available to assist with any repair costs or damages to a unit. We spelled out a process for that, what the application would look like, who would be responsible, and what inspections occur with that, the kind of grievance process, should there be a denial of that. So we tried to lay out all of the different pieces that would be necessary to go into that type of risk mitigation fund. And then the second piece is the ready-to-rent certification. So that's kind of a landlord piece, and now the tenant piece is really looking at very much like that Rent Smart program with UW Extension, is to utilize local faculty who are engaged with the landlord community. In this case, we've identified Jenny Chapit with United Affordable Policy, West Central Scotsor, UCP. And she would be utilizing kind of her liaison skills and educational skills to provide a very focused curriculum, very much like that Rent Smart program. Again, that should be essentially the lead faculty as a part of this ready-to-rent certification, and then engage other landlords as they become interested in participating. Again, we're hopeful that this one-year pilot project will be very successful. Try to lay out some opportunities for really measuring success through the program, both from, again, from the landlord participation side, as well as kind of the tenant and client side. And hopefully, it will be very successful moving forward, again, to engage those who have some high barriers to successfully renting in the Eau Claire area as, again, as it relates to tenants, and then also engaging those landlords who are very interested in providing that a little more secure housing for individuals. So with that, again, I can go on and on, obviously, in terms of how much we put into this. But again, I've been honored to be kind of the lead scribe and hosting some of these meetings. But again, a number of community partners really gathering together to make this work. So with that, pleased to present this for your consideration. Thank you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Allen? Councilmember Gustafson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for the presentation, and I want to recognize how appreciative of Eau Claire is for Councilmember Worthing bringing this into our budget so that it could become a living, adapting program. My question would be, since it's taken us this long to get the pilot going, I'm wondering, what kind of vision are we holding for the future, as far as future funding? Do we, will that $25,000 last more than one year, or are we going to be looking for other funds or funding sources?
Well, excellent question. The intention here, and again, the timing, too, was to try to get this off the ground before the end of the calendar year here, so in other words, also before the end of the budget year, so that we can actually look at a pretty solid 12 months, as much as possible. At least anyway, kind of 10 to 12 months, but to carry through and have as close to a full year as possible to review and consider, so that there may be an opportunity to look at additional funds for the 2022 budget year. So as you consider and deliberate the budget for 2022, hopefully you have a pretty full picture of how successful this program is.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Allen from council? Councilmember Brager.
Yeah, thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Mr. Allen. Does the Housing Opportunities Commission have a role to play with regard to this program?
Also, yeah, very good question. Timing-wise, again, looking at taking the cues from council's budget again, 2019, and here we are in 2020 already, so carrying these funds over. So since this was a program already kind of in the works and had this external kind of crafting and support, we've not considered really carrying this back through the Housing Opportunities Commission, which is just recently underway. So there may be an opportunity certainly to participate perhaps in that review of that successfulness of it next year, or as it's ongoing. But, so I could see that without a real solid plan for what they would be involved with. I could see them participating kind of in a review of that pilot year, and perhaps, you know, what that may look like moving forward. But in this current iteration, they have not been directly involved, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Allen? I'm not seeing any, thank you.
Thank you.
On a motion that my councilmember Anderson, and seconded by councilmember Beaton, the decision is moved. Councilmember Rippon.
Thank you, Council President Weld, and just wanted to share my thanks with Mr. Scott Allen, our city staff, the affordable housing, Jonah Affordable Housing, as well as Jenny Wood Chapit, and a whole number of different partners who helped think about, and Mary Proznick as well, think about how this program Proznick as well, think about how this program could be done successfully. You know, just to reiterate, this was really crafted after something that has already been tried in our community and had some success, and I think the hope here is that we can continue, you know, supporting community members who may have had, you know, some issue in the past, or some something on their record, or really anything that makes it harder for them to get their application accepted and reviewed by a potential landlord. And so, I think, you know, one of the ways that I see this, and I understand what this is really about, is it's thinking about how do we build stronger trust between tenants and landlords moving forward. It's a two-way street, and I think that the hope is that by bringing community partners together, and by, you know, facilitating a place where there's sort of a common understanding that we're going to have success with this program, and, you know, we need it. We were, you know, we saw the news about Maples today. We have people who may be even trying during these cold winter months, trying to rent for the first time, potentially. We may even have people who, you know, have been evicted or haven't been able to keep up with their payments because of COVID. These are all things that potentially present a flag for them being able to get housing in the future. So, this this program, I think, you know, will will hopefully go a long way to supporting community members in especially what I think is going to become a very tough time in the coming year. So, thank you for, Mr. Scott Allen, thank you for all of your work on this, and again, thank you to all the community partners. I know there's many of them that were involved in thinking about how this could be put together.
Thank you. Councilmember Workman? Any other discussions from Council? I'm not seeing any. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Drager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
And now, I have the passage unanimously. Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the Malcolmated Transit Union Local 1310. Good afternoon, Ms. Shelton.
Good afternoon. Before you is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Eau Claire and ATU Local 1310. On October 9th, a tentative agreement was reached between the City of Eau Claire and the ATU for a successor collective bargaining agreement. Last evening, in closed session, we walked through some of the terms of the the language changes with respect to the bargaining agreement, and then this morning, a memorandum was distributed to councilmembers that summarized some of the language changes. I'll just hit some of the highlights tonight. This is for a two-year agreement. It's it's going to be backdated, it goes back to January 1st of this year, and runs through December 31st of 2021. With respect to the across-the-board wage increases, the tentative agreement calls for the same wage increases that were accepted, subject with the police and fire unions, and is also similar to the proposed across-the-board wage increases that are that will be brought forward for introduction tonight for the nonrepresented employees. It is a 1.25% salary increase on January 1st of 2020 and July 1st of 2020, and then another 1.25% increase in January and July of 2021. Some of the other highlights of the agreement, there is some wage parity with respect to the nonrepresented and represented mechanics working in the city shop. So, whether you're working on city fleet vehicles or city buses, it would provide for the same rate of pay, and then both sets of mechanics would work on both sides of the shop. Probably the biggest accomplishment with respect to this tentative agreement is that it did provide for some more flexibility to to management to be able to hire part-time bus operators. We've had difficulty hiring part-time operators due to the fact that they're scheduled to work 20 hours, but they don't have a set window of time when they those 20 hours they could be called to work, so it was impossible for them to have other outside employment. So, this would create certain windows of of time where the part-time operators would have a set schedule, and then outside of that, just within that same window of time, they could potentially be drafted if a full-time driver called in sick, but they would have the the other window of time where they would know that they would not be called into work so that they could have outside employment. And then, for consistency purposes, another item that this agreement would provide for is that the transit union, they were, I think, the only union that was on a different vacation schedule than the rest of city employees, so it would have the same periods of time where employees would earn vacation on the same schedule. And then the the bus operators, they are not, obviously because of the schedule, able to take breaks or lunches. Under the old contract, they were paid two tenths of an hour for breaks each day that they worked, and that's been increased 0.5 to compensate them for the fact that, you know, they do not have that opportunity to take breaks and eat meals the same as other city employees. So, that's kind of the highlights of the bargaining agreement. Also, before Council tonight is a proposed ordinance that would amend the transit pay plan to reflect the across-the-board pay increases of 1.25% in January and July of each of the two years of the contract. That's Agenda Item Number 17, and Human Resources respectfully requests that Council to spend the rules and take up that proposed pay plan ordinance this afternoon, so that those pay increases can be implemented due to the fact that we're 10 months into the year, so there's going to be some time necessary to to figure out back pay and award that back pay. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that councilmembers might have about the the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Are there any questions from Council? I am not seeing any. Thank you very much. On motion then by Councilmember Burby, and seconded by Councilmember Christofferson, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christofferson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. I I simply want to acknowledge the successful negotiation with this union, the needs were were real and legitimate, the conversation was robust, and I want to specifically acknowledge the attorney, Mr. Nick, in bringing us to a satisfactory conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christofferson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
And now, I have the passage unanimously. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution authorizing remote attendance at city councils in public meetings. Good afternoon, Mr. Shelton.
Thank you, Council President Weld. This resolution before the city council today is in response to the COVID crisis in the area, and I'll read the summary background and be more than happy to answer questions. The Eau Claire COVID ordinance is allowed for remote or virtually emergency or special meeting, provided it also satisfies Wisconsin Open Meeting Law. Remote meetings have been authorized for the health, safety, welfare, and good order of the city during the current COVID-19 pandemic. City Council also recently adopted an amendment to the ordinance, which is not yet effective due to the 60-day notice period associated with charter ordinances. However, this resolution is consistent with that amendment and permitted through the city's statutory emergency powers on an interim basis. The Attorney General has offered a legal opinion that the that utilizing remote attendance as public health conditions require while retaining public notice and ability of the public to observe public meetings is permitted under the Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. This resolution finds a continued need for remote and virtual meetings, and if adopted, would allow the city council and all City of Eau Claire boards, committees, and commissions, and such other City of Eau Claire public bodies to which the Open Meetings Law are applied, to continue to notice and convene meetings for remote or virtual attendance until December 31st, 2020. While the emergency orders expire today, the charter effect in essence takes effect on November 21st, 2020. This resolution would allow remote attendance for meetings in between those times and up until and including December 31st, 2020. That'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from Council from Ms. Shelton? I am not seeing any. Thank you. On a motion then by Vice President Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Drager, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christofferson?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you very much interim city manager. I think this is so important for the continuity of our connection with our community and the maintenance of city government, but I do also just want to acknowledge that as we maintain our community's conversation about the health ordinance, that this is a piece that that people of the earth for really want to get back to face-to-face. So, with with just an acknowledgement to the fact that it's dissatisfying for us to to try and connect adequately with the community, this is really an excellent, healthy, reliable way for us to maintain a level of public communication, and I'm really grateful that we were able to come up with these, the WebEx and the equipment and the space and our chambers. So, although it's not ideal, I'm I'm very supportive of this continuing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christofferson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lor?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
And now, I have the passage unanimously. Agenda item number 15 is an ordinance rezoning property located at 3301 and 3155 Berth Street to amend the general development plan for mixed-use development for a four-story apartment building and commercial building. Does Council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Lor, and seconded by Councilmember Mike Hammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
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 Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
And now, I have the passage unanimously. Agenda item number 15 is an ordinance rezoning property located at 3301 and 3155 Berth Street to amend the general development plan for mixed-use development for a four-story apartment building and commercial building. Does Council have any additional questions for Mr. Allen from last night's presentation? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember Lor, and seconded by Councilmember Mike Hammer, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Burby?
Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burby?
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 Aye.
Chris Aberson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Drager?
Aye.
Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Burby?
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 Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye.
Chris Davison?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
And now I have the passes. Now we have eight ordinances for introduction. Agenda item number seventeen is an ordinance amending section 2.72.010 entitled City of Eau Claire Pay Plan, adopted. Specifically that part there pertaining to amalgamated transit union local thirteen ten employees. Agenda item number eighteen is an ordinance rezoning property located at 4223 Jeffers Road from R-1A to R-3P and to adopt the general development plan for apartment buildings of thirty-two to thirty-six units. Agenda item number nineteen is an ordinance amending Title eighteen entitled zoning code of the City of Eau Claire related to commercial districts. Agenda item number twenty is an ordinance annexing lands to the City of Eau Claire located at County Highway T, town of Wheaton, Triple County, as shown on planning drawing number twenty-three A, City of Eau Claire petition one-four-three-three-six. Purvis Council statutes and annexation ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. Therefore, eight affirmative votes of the eleven council members are required. Agenda item number twenty-one is a charter ordinance relating to the city council and the reinforcement of the automatic district of the City of Eau Claire. Again, adoption of the charter ordinance requires a two-thirds vote of the elected members of the governing body. Agenda item number twenty-two is an ordinance amending Table twelve of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing Prohibited, and Title ten of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Agenda number twenty-three is an ordinance amending the City of Eau Claire Pay Plan and Practices. Agenda item number twenty-four is an ordinance amending chapter one-five point oh-four of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Sewage Service Charge to Increase the Sewer Use Charges as proposed in the twenty-twenty-one operating budget. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these ordinances this evening? Councilmember Christoffersen?
I move that we suspend the orders and take up item number seventeen.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye. Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye. Aye.
Chris Davison?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worstman?
Aye.
Grager? John?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye.
And now I have the passes unanimously. Are there any other ordinances that council wishes to take up?
Beaton, Eau Claire, on the ordinance itself. Always a suspense call.
Okay. All right, so we are suspending the rules. And now we will take up the ordinance amending section 2.72.010 entitled City of Eau Claire Pay Plan, adopted. Specifically that part there pertaining to amalgamated transit union local thirteen ten employees. Are there any questions in regards to these agenda items from Ms. Soltzer? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton and seconded by Councilmember Burge, this item is moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Burge?
Aye.
Chris Davison?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Grager?
Aye. Aye.
Mike Hammer?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Well?
Aye.
Worstman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And now I have the passes unanimously. Are there any other orders that council wishes to pick up? Seeing none, can I bring just two announcements? Interim City Manager Soltzer.
Thank you. We just have a few announcements this week. On November eighteenth to the twentieth, there is a National League of Cities Virtual Summit. If you're interested in attending, let Ms. Merle know in the city manager's office. November twentieth, we have the Chamber Act of Issues. It's virtual. If the guest today for that Act of Issues will be Charles Franklin, would be Marquette La Paul. And then we're going over the post-election analysis of what Wisconsin Board has decided on November third. And very exciting news, our recently retired city manager Dale Peters wins the statewide excellence award. Former Eau Claire City Manager Dale Peters is going to be awarded the Norman T. M. Gill Award at the November eighteenth Virtual Event. The Norman M. Gill Award is presented. It's presented. Hopefully recognized as a non-official official for individual excellence or elevation in local government. And Gill is nominated by the Eau Claire Chamber of Commerce and our current vice president Jerry Wall for this. So very well deserved, this deal with an excellent city manager. And I guess the last last announcement is I have a pleasure of working with wonderful staff every day at the city and city council. I felt it was important to not only give a shout-out to the people with my normal part of working for the city, but also recognize staff that get thanks back from the community. But going to be reaching out to departments in my interim role here and getting the staff members that are going above and beyond with the community. And this week, we received feedback from my Christian Cooper, who is in our engineering department from the Sunset Park Neighborhood Association. And they were very grateful with the way he handled work with alleyways. Very pleased and thankful that Christian handled work quickly and mentioned it was very much appreciated and everyone to know how thankful the Neighborhood Association was for that. And very grateful for Christian for being on top of everything on our alleyway projects in that neighborhood where we're trying to improve the quality of life. So we get lots of feedback from the public, our employees and the staff they do. And I just felt it was important to give a shout-out to them. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soltzer. Councilmember Christoffersen?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I just wanted to announce to my colleagues and to the general public actually that we've set a date for our second annual Neighborhood Association Summit. It will be held virtually on Friday, November twentieth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Information will be following. We're using a slightly different format. This year, it's the same amount of time, but the first presentation will be one large group, one topic. And then the second half of the summit is going to be breakout sessions that people can choose. But I hope that the council members will pencil it onto their calendar and make this a contact with our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christoffersen. Are there any other announcements? I guess I would just like to remind everyone, and I know it's been suggested that we all need to take part in this. And I can't speak of anything more important right now with all sincerity and having been a resident of the city for fifty years, that we all work hard at wearing a mask and encouraging everyone else to wear a mask. Please maintain at least six feet of physical distancing and please avoid large gatherings. And if you don't feel well, please stay home. Again, I can't emphasize how important this is to our community and to each of us. And this will continue and ask that our residents of the city continue to remind each other and again, as individuals, that we set the example. I can't think of a more important time than right now to start that if you have it already. So with that, there is no other business or objection from council?
Mr. President?
Councilmember Clint Hammer?
Thank you. I don't recall ever doing this previously, but I think after the election on Tuesday, I think it might be appropriate for a letter to go out or a note of appreciation to all the people that worked the polls, especially those that worked for the drive-through voting. They put themselves out more this year than I can recall. And I think a message of appreciation from our interim city manager and our council president on our behalf might be a good idea.
Certainly, I can, I agree a hundred percent. Your job that everyone has done is well worth protecting. Thank you, Councilmember Clint Hammer. All right, Council Vice President Emanuel?
Thank you. Just want to piggyback on that. I think that was really an excellent suggestion. So thank you, Councilmember Clint Hammer. While you're in the letter-writing mode, if it would be agreeable to our council president and to our interim city manager, also a note to the folks who are working with the COVID response, especially with the public health department. Of course, this news must be absolutely deflating and overwhelming. And so I think even if it's words of sincerity and appreciation, affirmation to our public health team would be really important to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, if there's no objection from council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.